Follow me to order, we have a forum, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. There's motions or second?
My second.
All favor I?
Aye.
Aye, close. Here. Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Good morning. Right, well. Couple of things, Mr. Times that's nice. I have missed it and some other free pictures. Um, I had a call last week from City Man and I know AJ stopped talking about it, there's a little drainage issue on the south side of town, Parker Avenue. Kind of been a thorn in Manly's side for a while and I think it's got some drainage district intake and whatnot, so. I talked to Lonnie Human with the city a little bit and he's gonna do some exploratory there first. There's an old intake there and I can't tell if there's a collapsed pipe, it's been sucking, sucking dirt for a long time and. The way, when I looked at everything, it didn't look like the way that intake, there was one across the street diagonal to another driveway. The way the lines looks, things are goofy out there, but the biggest issue I guess was that this intake doesn't take, the water drains away, it's just that the intake is full of silt and he thinks that there's silt down bottom and so he's just gonna do some exploratory digging around to find out what's going on, he said. It is a, it is a drainage district location. If it's in Manly's right away, I think Manly's on the hook to pay for it, if it gets beyond that, then we let the board know and it becomes a drainage district issue and then assessments go out for any others. But we, we, we think there might just be a collapse somewhere on the west side of the road. And then the waters get entering, so he's just kinda do some exploratory and I don't know when it will be this week or not.
Yeah, I know it's been a pain for a while.
And I said, well, whatever you do, I think that the intake still needs to stay there, he was gonna try to bypass it and I said, why don't we find out what's going on first because the intake's there for a reason, we don't wanna just bypass it and not use it. Cause you could take the water, run it down the ditch on the, going south and then it would end up crossing the cross color for yourself, but I said, it's here for a reason, let's, let's look and find out what's going on first, cause it might be a, a simple replace ten feet of pipe and be done, so, he's gonna look into that.
Good.
Um. I got some, I got a quote back from Safety Solutions, but we can maybe talk about that.
Yeah, we can jump to it.
I don't know if you guys want to jump on board with that right away, or were we gonna look at anybody else?
Is that Jim?
That's Jim, that was here today.
Okay.
Um, he says got the six thousand dollars annual building twelve, twelve installments and then the fifteen hundred dollars to help set up a manual.
It was quoted a bit less than what I was quoted from the other.
Yeah, and you know, you start now and find out what works for us.
Well, you can start building with it, I mean, you know, it's, it's kind of an all, I don't wanna say all apart, but it, you know, it is and it is, we could probably get in there get an initial inspection type of deal done and decide what you kinda need to do from there, I think.
It always costs something to get started.
Well, it will.
Once you maintain, it's not so bad.
And once we've got something, it it's kinda like insurance too.
It's making the step that they wanna make.
It's making a step that we need to.
And we need to do, yeah, so. I think we need to go ahead with it, you know, just need to figure out how to divide it amongst the departments, I think.
And yeah, I think we can, we can figure that out pretty simple enough too.
Yeah.
Cause like we had talked about before, I think. We have a lion's share of the exposure.
I was gonna say, I know mine's opened up right now.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a start.
We're all paid a dollar, that's why.
Not even.
And I, so how much, I know obviously this is focused more towards secondary roads, but it's, it's uh conservation, obviously, and then Sheriff's Department, I mean.
I, I guess that's why you talk about the Sheriff's Department.
You know, they get separate training. You know, they've got separate training that's just distinctive to them, but they're, they're also should be prone to lifting.
Yep.
You know, that kinda stuff, running out of vehicles properly, you know.
Only that return to work type policies that will help us develop.
Exposure to traffic, I mean, they've got all kinds of that, I mean, they're similar to our stuff, it's a little bit less more.
Yeah. Dan, I don't know if, if you, what you think, I mean, I know you guys do quite a bit of your own training, but we gonna have to incorporate you guys somehow, at least on some of the basics with this probably, does that, think that'll be an issue over there, or should that be fine?
Does Joel have to give him permission or can he talk?
But it's, it's, it, yeah.
Do you have to let Dan talk?
But everybody else can slip trips and calls.
Or can he let himself talk?
He don't let herself talk.
He might be training his new deputy or talking.
He might be busy, that's fine, we'll, we'll work that out, like I said, you between, you're gonna probably deal with about.
There is.
And?
Just picked up on that, I had Sam Venechek on the phone with a complaint, so.
Alright. Um, did you hear what I said, or?
No, I didn't.
Okay, well basically we're looking at the safety situation and obviously roads is a good majority of it, uh, conservation will be some, but then I know you guys do a lot of your own training, that's just significant to you guys, but um we'd like to incorporate you guys just a little bit, probably with just some of the basic stuff as well too, is that gonna be an issue? You need it or not, what do you think?
The only thing with mine, if you're talking my, it depends how far you're talking because we run twenty-four seven, so I have guys that work at night that aren't gonna be able to make training. You know, depending on if they're sleeping or not.
Not the logistics of it. We're not talking about actual training right now, we're talking more about the logistics and the planning going forward with, with a, a guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Having a policy and all that good stuff.
Right.
Well, I got my Lexipol, which writes out all my policies and then we're mandated by the state of Iowa and ILA on what we have to cover every year. Um, we are mandated, you know, that we have to cover, but.
Maybe you just talk to your for a little bit and you'd be done.
Right, basically, we just wanna cover any gray area that would be fall between the cracks and then if we're gonna implement, you know, back to work policies and all this other stuff, I mean, you guys are gonna have to be somewhat a part of that as well too. Cause we countywide, basically, so.
As long as they match up with my Lexipol or vice versa, because that Lexipol, we pay a lot of money for them to keep our policies intact and they've proven very effective on protect those lawsuits.
Yes, my guess would be that you could um, use your stuff in that, in this policy, you know, you could probably keep your stuff and it'd be included into.
Right.
In the countywide policy.
Yeah, right, yep, I don't think we'd wanna get rid of that.
No.
No, yeah, so.
Or rewrite anything that you already have, I think I just referenced that in this policy handbook, Sheriff's Department's gonna follow this and that'd be done.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think, I think we just need to personally go ahead with it and get started on it.
Yes.
We could look around, look around, just get more confused with people's proposals and this guy's purely local and.
Trained and training is, he just.
It seems reasonable.
Yeah, it does really, it really does, so.
Public health would be a good place for him too, cause you know, lifting.
Right.
Bus drivers for the most part. Yeah, and the nurses I suppose too.
Well, the bus drivers in winter time.
The whole employees walking across the parking lot on an icy day, I'm sorry, you know what, it's, it's all part of it because it's all on the grounds if that happens.
Um, do we need to make this a, this better acting motion next week or just?
Try to do that next week, yeah.
Yeah, just give me the name of the.
Put that up for next week and we'll.
Um, I have a final estimate for one oh five left here. A long time of getting one of these figured out, we're finally there, so um there's just a few sheets for the chair to sign. It's a little on the cost of project, the DOT is we had uh I can't remember what the final cost was, I just always forget when I do a pay estimate, they just want to know items and then they send.
How you wanna find for in company?
It was like three, well, not, this is a good, this is, this is Kroll.
Okay.
It was three point, I wanna say it's just three point one or two million on that project.
This is the original one.
Yeah, the first section. So, it'll need signatures on those, like, and send that to the DOT, they need wet signatures on it.
Take a motion to approve the final payment voucher for Highway one oh five.
I wish that motion.
Alright, motion or second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? You're none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, close. Okay.
We're putting a lot of rock down out there just to kinda get things leveled up, like I said last week, if we don't do it, we're gonna fix somebody else to do it, they're doing a good job, I mean, it's good. Build up, the, 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 the eastbound's gonna be a little bit worse, just because think a few years back, we tried to do some shoulder reshaping, we never did finish coming back east, so there's a lot lower, a lot lower shoulders out there, but I think we do it now, we're better off, so.
Uh.
So when we pay that section, we're just paying the top part of it, right?
Widen it again.
Widen it just for us.
You guys, somebody asked me that the other day.
Going right over the top, just like we did on the first.
Yep, but we're also in the three, three foot widening unit on the side.
Got you.
So that we're not always trying to maintain, maintain the shoulder. What the way, what's that?
No, I just didn't, sometimes I have to sign on sometimes.
Back in like.
Yep, we'll do the gravel roads, except for the two that are just basically dead end dry, like I said.
Oh, yeah.
Very much, um, yeah, so it'll be identical, well, the design is the same, um we pulled the fabric interlayer back out of it, just because I don't know that we gained a lot of benefit from it, we'll find out. Expected to crack, I do, but it's gonna have fibers in it, so.
Okay, and then you're cutting it, you're doing the wider gaps every so many feet?
No, this one will just be standard joint spacing.
Okay.
Just like the first one, because we're not making the small panels anymore. It's a thicker section, this is six inches and then an eight foot or an eight inch widening unit thicker. So with the thicker pavements, we don't need to make the five by five panels.
Oh.
So we won't need to worry about, plus they'll be sealed then, so.
Yeah.
We'll.
Cause you had talked about going and cutting some stuff.
That's on the old stuff.
The old stuff, yeah, cutting in like the one inch, one inch wide gap, fill it with tar and then.
We haven't gotten there yet.
But yeah, I didn't know if this was gonna fall into that.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't need to do that, I mean, mother nature does what she wants, but uh the design is different than the older stuff, so. The thicker pavement for one, the, the joint spacing's being sealed, the joints and the space, that being sealed makes a big difference too, so.
Okay.
And so.
Sounds good.
Um, and then uh, we have to get back, the, the DOT lets the salt bid every spring, you know, we just get out of winter and all of a sudden they wanna know what for salt, so. We uh, last year's salt price was eighty-seven dollars and ten cents, we ordered eighteen hundred tons, we got a pretty full shed. We dropped down to a thousand tons this year, it's a cost of eighty-seven ninety, so it only went up by about a percent, so it's not a bad deal for us. Um, we can order, we have a thousand tons, we can go about twenty percent above that, so we'll just see how winter treats us. They're supposed to supply us with twenty percent more, or, or depending on pricing, we take twenty percent less. We'll just play that by your, but we'll have to send, we'll send our uh our yes, that we're gonna accept that as a price, that's, that's not a bad increase. Considering.
Been a decent year for salt this year.
Yeah, yeah, and it's nice that we kinda saved a little bit this year on salt, so we can reduce our order. Um. And then all I have left for Jackie is, you know, to just get, look at our uh payroll for mowers this year, so.
When do they start, after?
Well, we'll see how the grass is growing, we usually try to bring them in early June, but the grass isn't growing that fast right now, so. We'll, we'll hold off as long as we can.
We're getting rain and moisture, I'll start.
Yeah, right. The price is as green as it is around here, won't take long. And then uh, just one final note, uh, we'll be gone Thursday, Friday.
Alright, any else for rich guys? Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, drainage, see what's claims and. Sure you guys look through this over, questions? I'll take a motion to approve the uh, claims and stamp warrants.
Motion.
All favor I?
Aye.
Close. Here.
Because the check was lost and they went sign our forms, so had to do a stop at the bank and it was just about time.
Yeah, let's see a motion to approve the special payment in Lawson. All make a motion. All favor I?
Aye.
Aye, close. Alright, reports.
Third court.
One to seven hundred dollars.
Motion to, to the court report.
So moved.
Motion a second. All favor I? Bye, close. Here. Never seen anybody turn down money coming in. Uh, payroll is really your salary changes.
Yeah, it's gonna get tight.
Yeah, I guess. These are all mowers.
And uh, dispatch jailer and uh, deputy.
Alright, so dispatch jailer, a deputy and a couple mowers for secondary roads. Motion to approve the uh, payroll eligibility for Justin Burns, Chris Spott, Terry O'Hern, Gary Brunhold and Jordan Helbison.
So moved.
For a second, a second, any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Liquor license or cigarette license? Uh, your management plan?
No, I forgot to take that off.
Stick really long.
Um. Civil matter and tobacco, Jeff, stop them in, or is that just a?
I'm not sure.
Or is that just when it is, at nine o'clock this morning?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty well done.
Yeah, I think they already got the money.
Cause they, they uh, they pled guilty, so it was just a, we either get, we either take the money or the state takes it, so. But I guess we'll see if he pops in, if that is a fine. Uh, board appointment, regional housing alternate yet? Yes, oh, found him? Yep, cool. Tony Talk Butler. Oh, okay. Did you get a app back yet?
Hmm, not that I know of.
It's coming.
Okay.
Soon as we see it, we'll put her on the list then. Uh, safety committee, we kinda discussed that, so, thank you. Uh, when we're back, go.
Morning.
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 Um, on the twenty-fifth, there's gonna be a shop Iowa at Bean and Bistro from seven thirty to eight thirty, um, and S P D C rep will be up from Des Moines to talk about the um, putting your small business online and utilizing the Shop Iowa platform.
Okay.
And then, um, speaking of S P D C and venture school, I know the one with Becco Board approved to do, uh, to sponsor two applications per session, we just may, need to make sure that when companies do sign up for venture school, that they talk to me um, prior to going to venture school, just so that they're not saying, oh, all of a sudden I can get reimbursed. We need to know and I need to get board approval in order to reimburse um a venture school applicant.
Okay. But assume they talked to you first anyway, just to get the information.
I would have thought so.
If anybody ever would ask me, that's right, point of that, cause I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but no. So, yeah, I guess we do, we will send them your direction, so.
Alright, sounds good, and if you do find so, um, any in, interest in venture school, Winnebago and Worth County have all placed in the top three in the last three sessions, so it'd be great to keep that streak going.
I agree, so, yeah, if anybody else, definitely send them your way. Um, and Jackie did push out that email about Country Thunder, so we maybe get lucky and get some volunteers from this area to come over and help you out that weekend.
Great, there's um, from three to six on Saturday is all we, we need two people left for that.
Okay.
So that'd be great.
Good, I'm sure we'll find somebody. Couple three passes, I'm sure somebody else might raise their hand, so.
You bet.
Alright, thanks Melissa, guys. Okay, thanks Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, Jason Petersburg, final retainers, payment approval?
Yeah, just um, you've already approved, I just have a copy of this, you've already approved the that two thousand whatever, and now they're gonna give them the retainage, cause it's done, done.
They cleaned up their, whatever they had to do, yeah, they done their checklist, I guess.
Get their last few dollars.
Now we're done.
Take a motion to approve the uh, final payment for retained general.
So moved.
Energy, there's motions, there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
No, it's a little.
Alright. Exactly. That's in the past.
No.
Water, wastewater, I did get an email yesterday afternoon from People Service, ours, county sanitaryian agreement is up for renewal as well. So I've got an email, or Jessica, what health does that runs through their department, take a look at that and see what the extension is, but. Um. I, I'm assuming it runs through their board, cause I haven't seen it, Mark's, that's probably why you've never seen it, cause.
I don't remember approving it in the area, so it must be a longer term agreement.
Yeah, so we'll find out what the, what the renewal extension is, or.
They might just bump it up a percentage and roll it through.
That's like the rest, that's like the, the contract we're in now, to go another year, they just, you get the three percent or whatever it is in the agreement. So. That will probably be coming through, but oh, get more info on the sanitarian one, so. Let's jump down to department head discussion, is there any department heads want to discuss anything?
Tuesday is, says us, so they're supposed to be here tomorrow, I haven't heard or confirmed yet, but I imagine they're coming.
Anything we need to be here, or one of us need to be here?
Nope, they're just gonna beat up Jackie, so.
Let's just pray. Bail me out of jail.
We need there to be the back you or whatever, we can, I'm sure we can work it out between us, so.
If you guys, if you wanna attend, you're worth it. Uh, and then I will be out of the office Wednesday and Thursday this week, uh, I'll be down at Power Sheik.
Say after that, I might wanna be too.
Yeah, if you want to come left, yeah.
Alrighty.
I have is, I will be out of the office on Friday and with Margie being gone, we do have someone trained on hers, but our civil work and front end stuff might be a little bit behind. Um, Terry's doing really good filling in there, but we'll see how that goes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Anybody else? All quiet.
Yes.
Might be hearing things.
Need somebody in the accessory office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just hearing, please.
Yeah, I just saw somebody walk down, I didn't know where they went, so, I can hear.
See who walked up.
Somebody in shorts, so.
Uh, Bob Johnson, is he just coming in on Zoom, or is he?
Um, we're gonna call him.
Call him, okay.
I didn't even think about it. I just got his phone number.
Jeff, I were here this morning.
Good.
Well, you're on the, on the list, our civil matter with the
Okay, well, the casino sent me a check for three hundred, but they didn't they did sign the proposed settlement hearing, okay. So what we need to do is we need to have a hearing on, on the matter and the first thing is, I'd have you take note of the cigarette license of tobacco sales in Diamond Joe's name. This is the criminal complaint against one of their employees. This is proof that it was played, which is the same as a guilty plea.
Okay.
And then here's the proof of service on the notice of the uh notice of hearing. And I note that we also have three hundred dollar check, which is the amount of the civil penalty made payable to the treasurer. So at this time, I'd ask that you take notice of those documents that you find that uh, there's been a violation under four fifty-three eight point two one and assess a civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars against Diamond Joe Worth LLC, the holder of the uh, tobacco license.
Like that in a form of a motion or just an acknowledgement that we're seeing these.
A motion and second vote, I think it's, gets the job done.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion to uh approve the three hundred dollar civil penalty to Diamond Joe for cigarette violation, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, take a roll call vote, Lowberg?
Aye.
Smitty?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
That motion will pass.
And I had someone wander in my office at eight o'clock, so I didn't have an opportunity to prepare. Hope this will give to Jackie would put in the bank, I will take a look and see if they want us to do something in writing.
Like a resolution?
Well, I don't know what they may want, but whatever it is uh, this is taking care of it, you know, AJ will be able to sign, sign whatever paper what they want, but that would be my thoughts.
Okay. Well, I guess it's done dealing, we just will take the money instead of the state, so.
Absolutely.
Alright, that it?
That's all for me, you guys got any going on?
I don't believe so. With a major as a mouth.
The court has changed its mask policy to meet up with the CDC, so those of us who have had our shots in the waiting period, no longer required to wear a mask, although they're still enforcing the six feet separation, so I still have to do uh, picking of juries at the casino, so far we've done that twice, uh, we've had two jury trials since beginning of the year, um, it has worked other than the inconvenience of having to drive seven miles to, to deal with things and drive back, it's worked well.
That's good.
I was curious, how are they gonna police who had their shot, who's had their shots?
I don't know, not, not my concern.
Cause still a discussion.
You're gonna have to bring your car with you.
No, that's still a discussion. No, that's still a discussion.
Probably honor system, but definitely.
Well, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, if there's anything else, I will go back to my office and see if I can't find a letter from. From the fellow.
Alrighty, thanks. Alright, Jeff Gorbal, come on in.
As is my practice, I wrote everything down, so I didn't miss anything, I hope you catch copies of this when I'm done. Uh, but I wanted to take some time this morning, provide an update on the actions that have been taken underway with County Zoning Commission. I know there were also some questions and discussion during last week's supervisor meeting. So hopefully my comments today will address them as well, and if not, I certainly welcome questions afterwards. Uh, as a matter of background, the supervisors received two different petitions by hundreds of county residents. Calling for the supervisors to look into the situation of commercial wind development in the county. This was in light of the facts that a recent commercial wind development did not seem to have been conducted according to understanding of the citizens or supervisors. And since there was a potential new development being planned by the same energy company. As a result, the supervisors passed moratorium on commercial wind development with a stated purpose for the pause. To complete research and development regarding ordinance language to govern commercial wind development. The zoning, county zoning commission is a standing body of five members appointed by the supervisors. Each member is appointed a three-year term, and the terms of the members are staggered. Historically, the commission has dealt primarily with requests for zoning district changes limited to the three townships in the county which are zoned. However, the code also specifies the duties and responsibilities of the commission. Are to develop and provide recommendations to the supervisors with regard to comprehensive land use and development across the county. And since the supervisors called for such work in the moratorium resolution twenty twenty-one point oh four oh five. On April twelfth, the zoning commission met on April twenty-first to take up that work. Present during that meeting were all five appointed members, along with county zoning administrator. Who by code is required to act as secretary for the commission meetings, as well as for the meetings of the county board adjustment. Since this meeting, the zoning commission was the first one of twenty twenty-one, the first order of business was to elect a chair and co-chair. I was elected chair and David Quisley was elected co-chair. After the elections, a discussion was held regarding the need for the work pursuant to the resolution passed by the supervisors. A vote was taken to adopt a weekly meeting schedule so as to diligently work on the issue. To provide a report and set of recommendations to the supervisors as soon as possible. We believe that we understood the basic issues and concerns from citizens in general. As they have been expressed on multiple occasions during supervisor meetings and through multiple petitions. Since we felt we knew the basic concerns from residents, we decided our first order of business. Would be to hear from representatives of key stakeholders with a role in commercial wind development. As such, we scheduled meetings with representatives from Invenergy, Farm Bureau, County Conservation and County Engineer. We also immediately began research on existing ordinances from across all regions in Iowa. To develop a knowledge base of ordinances currently in place that were related to commercial wind development. That work involved a review of thirty-eight counties, finding thirty-four that had such ordinances in place. And I provided an appendix to the statement that shows a, a map of, of Iowa where we had found those, those ordinances. We discovered a mixture of approaches across Iowa. Some counties addressed commercial wind development requirements inside their zoning ordinances, and some established separate, separate ordinances. All counties that had wind ordinance language, regardless of the format. Established a special set of requirements and process related to application and approval. And most counties called for the board of adjustment to review, hear and adjudicate those applications. We found three counties that required the board of supervisors to do so. Cassuth County was a close neighbor that we found, and had recently in twenty eighteen. Established an ordinance independent from their zoning ordinance. And specified that the board of supervisors adjudicate commercial wind development application versus the board of adjustment. So we also asked their zoning administrator to speak with us. After those meetings and research to gather information, the zoning commission voted in the affirmative with one dissenting vote. That we believed it appropriate for the commission to recommend ordinance language related to commercial wind development. We have not yet voted to determine whether our recommendation will be for the language to be applicable county-wide or not. Or whether we believe it should be a standalone ordinance or included with the existing zoning ordinance. It was determined that the commission first worked on development of specific ordinance language, then addressed those questions. To date, the zoning commission has held four meetings, the first of which was really administrative, administrative. And organization of how we would approach our tasks. However, beyond the meetings. We've collectively, collectively spent over ninety hours, ninety hours. Uh, on research and information gathering specific to commercial wind development. And issues impacting counties, residents and commercial wind developers. We have identified seven existing county ordinances from, uh, counties in Iowa. That provide comprehensive guidance that we believe can serve as good models from us, from which to extract language. These are ordinances which have been approved in the past several years, and are in place today in counties that continue to have commercial wind projects. So we believe collectively they provide a comprehensive yet balanced approach. Some of the language between them are identical or overlap, and some contain unique aspects not addressed by others. Our plan is to now begin review and development of specific language for our recommendations. To that end, we've collected draft language predominantly lifted from the ordinance, as I mentioned. Which will review and, which we will review to determine if we feel it appropriate for Worth County. That information is presented in draft ordinance form for the committee, so that we can accurately review and assess the details. Once we've done so, our plan is to provide our recommendation and a copy of our detailed proposed language for each stakeholder. And all county citizens for review and comment. Now also note that we'll provide that for legal review. Uh, and I presume it would be okay for us to send a copy to, uh, NICO for them to review as well. Uh, we'll hold a public hearing for those comments, as well as accept them in writing. Once we reviewed and considered those comments and made any changes to our recommendations or proposed language that we feel necessary. Will provide the supervisors a report of our work and complete recommendations, including proposed ordinance language. Per regulation, it will then be up to the supervisors to decide how to proceed. And if an ordinance is decided by the supervisors, it will follow the normal public comment rules prior to adoption by the board. Since the work necessary to determine specific ordinance language is like trying to measure a piece of string without looking at it. It's difficult to say how long this process is gonna take. The commission is committed, however, to work diligently on this and continue to meet on a weekly basis until it's completed. We know that there are time-sensitive issues at play, and we know that Invenergy is hoping to enter their design stage soon. And anxious to have rules in place that they can be confident in. To this last point, we know that Invenergy has regularly been asking the supervisors to sign a development agreement. That specifies a physical setback, sound limit and shadow flicker limit. And they've stated that there are likely other issues, but what they're proposing is by far more than in prior agreements. While that's true, the proposed language does not fully address those three items. There are more details than the simple statements provided. Nor do those three things meet the complete needs around commercial wind development. Our research has found that beyond those three things. That are at least thirty-two more broad topics that are typically addressed in ordinances of this nature. Among them are things such as public hearing notices, lighting, drainage tile damage. Abandonment and decommissioning requirements, conservation in public land. Operation maintenance and repair requirements and transferability conditions, just to name a few. And simple statements of setback, sound and flicker as currently proposed only address the very basics of those issues. As was asked last week during the supervisor meeting, what happens if those conditions are violated? A good ordinance provides greater detail to those requirements, as well as addressing those what-ifs. And providing guidance related to issue resolution, including a process to achieve it. Signing any agreement with Invenergy in advance of receiving a report and recommendation from the zoning commission. Would not only miss these and other important considerations, but would be in violation of supervisor's own resolution approved just one month ago. I want to highlight a couple of other items. I know there are numerous rumors, misunderstandings and frankly, false information flying around about this topic. I want to ensure you that each of the zoning commission members take very seriously our responsibilities and duties. To look out for and respect the needs of landowners that desire wind turbines, as well as those that do not. And to ensure that the needs of our county residents are balanced with the needs of the county at large. And not to shut down development via ordinance as Madison County did. We understand that it's our obligation to promote the general welfare and private property rights in concert with balanced development. I believe that the plan of action we've laid out and ultimate recommendations will accomplish that. I look forward to being able to provide the detail to, of those to all persons for their review and input. Before we finalize them and provide them to the supervisors. I'll also point out that the work of the zoning commission is via meetings that are open to the people to listen in. Our agendas are posted on the county website and at the courthouse. We typically conduct them remotely via Zoom, and those recordings are available as well. So progress can be tracked that way, as well as our meeting minutes, which are also posted. In closing, I want to highlight that Worth County is our county, and development should be driven on our terms and schedules. Not individual developers that have their own incentives at heart. We have to recognize that each entity has their own interests and not lose sight of the fact that the county should not be driven by others. But rather what is in the interest of the county. And frankly, in our large absence of guidance around commercial wind development. The steps being taken by the supervisors to pause on those projects until the research and recommendations are completed is the right thing to have done. I applaud you in taking that step, and I look forward to help moving this along to completion. Finally, I've been asked, uh, to invite each of the supervisors to speak with the zoning commission. Uh, this Wednesday evening at our, our regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, as we begin to review ordinance language and consider what we should have in Worth County, we'd like to hear from each of you individually. To understand what concerns you've been hearing and gain insight into your individual perspectives. Ultimately, our recommendations are gonna be decided on by you. I scheduled fifteen minutes for each of you to join the meeting, uh, Wednesday evening, hopefully you can make it. Uh, we will have a, a Zoom session for that, so you can, uh, join remotely. We'd like to start with AJ as the chair at seven o'clock. Uh, followed by Mark as senior member at seven fifteen, and then Enos at seven thirty, at those times we work for the gentleman.
I think it should. I do have a pre-meeting before that, that should work.
I'll, I'll be available through Zoom.
Okay, great.
I'll be available, either, I'll be there or be available.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, this, um, this meeting will be our first one, we're gonna hold in person, just because. We're gonna be looking at the details of, of some draft language that we've gathered from the other counties, uh, and so we just felt it was. Yeah, it's gonna be easier for us and better if we're just sitting around a table with that stuff, uh, but we will still have a, a Zoom session for that. And we'll start that work after we've had a chance to hear from you guys.
That's at the old Zoom room.
That'll be at the old Zoom room, yeah. Any questions on the update, what we've done, what our intent is?
No, it, uh, it sounds like you're doing a very thorough job, and. The zoning commission wants to try to find that common ground area. Um, which is a fantastic idea. That's what I thought the entire time. So, uh, I do applaud you guys for that, for, for looking out for the best interest of everybody, both sides of the story, so. Um, hopefully we can come to a, a agreement that will work for everyone, or as many as possible.
Yeah, I, 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 I really think it, it, it will, because like I said, we've, we've done a lot of research looking at ordinances that are in place today. That, uh, with the exception of Madison County, which is, it's pretty clear when you read their ordinance, they wrote the ordinance to keep wind out. After the first project went in, um, but, um, I, I know for certain. That the other ordinances that we're using to, to look at for model language. It's ordinances that have been in place, and we know that the language is good. Uh, we know that these energy companies, including Invenergy, um, have already submitted applications. And, and done wind projects, uh, in those counties. Um, so we know that the, the terms of those things are amenable and, and supportable by the energy companies. So it, it, um, it should strike a balance. That's our intent.
So my only problem with this is you're leaving out, you're leaving out two-thirds of the county on this discussion. The zoning board only sits in the center part of the township now, and you're leaving out a large part of the county in this discussion.
Actually, I, I don't, I. Well, it, but the, my point is that the, the zoning commissioners as a board. Are the ones that are required to come up with, with draft language. Once we've come up with draft language, then our stated intent and obligation is then provide that draft language to everybody. Not just a few representatives.
Generally, the board represents the whole county. Generally, this is kind of an odd situation, we only have zoning in part of the county versus. Most counties are entirely zoned or not zoned going into this. You know, this is, I would assume the intention of this is to zone the whole county.
Not necessarily, that's why I said.
Well, I did hear that, but that might, my assumptions would be that's, this is where it's going. But, you know, I can't speak for either one of these two, but. Here's what the assumption to me would be that you wanna go countywide zoning, which is fine, but you need to include everybody in this discussion.
My, my personal belief, Mark, is that, and this is just one man's opinion. I can't, I'm not speaking for the, the zoning commission here. The zoning commission has made a, a deliberate decision as a group. That we're gonna put off the question of, should this ordinance language be standalone ordinance or inside zoning? We've put off the question whether or not the commercial wind development ordinance language should be applicable county-wide. Those two questions are yet to be addressed by the, uh, by the commission. My personal belief, um, I, I think it's a very strong likelihood. That what we'll end up with is a recommendation from the commission, that it be a standalone ordinance. And that that ordinance be applicable county-wide, and that we set aside the question, uh, whether or not. Zoning should be, should be extended county-wide.
There, again, if it's gonna be a standalone ordinance, every township should be involved in that discussion. Not just a small portion of the county.
Well, that, that's a matter of the fact that the, that's what the board consists of, that, that has been appointed, the zoning commission. And it's the responsibility of the zoning commission to come up with those, uh, recommendations. Once again, everybody's gonna get a chance to weigh into them before we finalize our recommendations. And give it to the board of supervisors, and then the board of supervisors is gonna have additional public hearings on whether it gets passed. I, I think everybody, not just a few additional representatives, literally everybody will get a chance to weigh in. Uh, multiple occasions before anything is, is passed.
I disagree with you, but that's. I've said my point, you know, it's up to you guys to go along or not go along with that.
Well, according, I asked Jeff, who could be on it last time, and he said it would, you'd still have your zoning commission. And all it would be is an advisory board making.
Which is because that's the way it's set up in the country right now.
Yep, so, and I guess whether it's an advisory board at the meetings they have. Or you have a public meeting, which you get the same input, I guess really doesn't matter one way or the other, how do you do it?
It's gonna come to, to the public at some point.
And it's still gonna come back to us at the very end.
After it's written, there's, there's no public input into it until before that, as far as from each township.
Right, but once again.
You either should have included, say, a trustee from each township, or whatever should have been included in this discussion. But after you have these public meetings, you can rewrite it, if you guys decide that.
Yeah, once we get.
Any changes in there according to public opinion.
It doesn't have to get passed after public meetings if.
No.
If it's not needed, um, it can go back to the drawing board again, and then come back in that same.
That's the intent of the, that's the intent of the public review.
Correct.
And it, right now, it, um, you know, if, if we were to open discussion to. Five more people, twenty more people, a hundred more people. That's all it's going to be, is a discussion of, I think this, I think this, I think this, I think this. What we're proposing is, and as I said, we've spent well over, uh, uh, ninety hours on this so far. Uh, what we're proposing is we'll craft very specific language for people to look at. That they can understand and, and make their own decision, whether they like it, they don't like it. They think something's wrong, they think something's missed, what have you. It's very specific for them to react to. As opposed to seventy-five people rendering additional opinion. And I think that is, is a more effective way of people giving their input into an ordinance.
I, I, I mean, I think you're going the right direction with it. It's not gonna go anywhere without public input.
Yep.
And public hearings. Um, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with the process that we're taking. Um, when something gets recommended to us, then, then we can make the decision from there. I mean, you guys are gonna do public hearings, you'll get more input. Right or wrong, you can make adjustments before you even bring it to us. So I, I mean, I guess I'm okay with it, but.
I like the fact that we have an individual involved that's doing as much research on it as possible to get the best. We can get as far as information and input into this thing. And that's what I think you're doing.
Like I said, collectively, we've spent a lot of time at this and, and, you know, we've been at it for less than a month.
And I like the fact they're getting on top of it and get going.
Yeah, there are, as I said, time sensitive issues.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
I don't have any, nope.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. Um, I did see a chat come through. Uh, as far as department had discussion, does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments on the Spark session?
We have a meeting next week again.
Meeting next Monday.
And then the twenty-sixth for advisory meeting.
I mean, I liked it, I was feeling good. I mean, a little more participation on Thursday, which was good, but.
I have found a lot of people that didn't even know what's going on.
Yeah, I found that.
I had a few phone calls and so I started asking around town.
Right.
They didn't even realize it and we put it in the paper, you know, you put it on social media.
Well, and I've noticed that people I sent letters to that said they wanted to be involved had already showed up.
I have too.
I mean, I understand it takes time out and you're busy.
Yeah.
We're trying, I guess, see what goes from there, so. Guess we'll discuss more of that next week at our FEH meeting, so. Uh, supervisor weekly. That's called Bob Goss, that's supposed to happen at thirty, you know. Enes, right on that phone?
Would you rather me say the number or you want me to hand it to you?
Just give it to me.
Okay.
Nine first.
Yep.
Nine to get out of here.
Nine, one, five, one, five. Five, six. Eight, one, eight, six. And you can push the speaker button.
Hi Bob, this is AJ Stone up here with county supervisors. How are you?
Pretty good.
Good, good. Well, we got you on our agenda today to help us with a little, uh, discussion on TIF. And the possibility of, uh, many in our urban renewal plan and map. So we've got a batch of wind turbines that'll be going online here in the very near future. And some projects we'd like to utilize TIF money from. And, uh, need your input, I guess, and assistance.
Well, I've worked with the county's urban renewal plan for a number of years. And along with Joe Mylon, who used to be at ICA. What you're looking at is a board in terms of compliance with state law. Is having a plan that spells out specific projects. And estimates of amount of TIF money that you wanna spend. And so anytime something new comes along, we basically have to amend. Go through a process to amend that, you know, plant. It's not difficult. It's just several steps that have to be taken. Uh, the main one is to, well, as I said, identify any project. For which TIF revenue is gonna be spent that hasn't already been specified in the plan. And then to put an estimate on the amount of money. And then if we're going to add properties such as more turbines. That will produce TIF, we have to, that has to be in an amendment. Also to identify those properties, the parcel numbers in particular. So that legally then, as they produce revenue, it can be collected. So that, that's what you're looking at in terms of, um, going forward and, and making it legal to spend TIF money. On particular projects and, uh, and as we've, or Jackie and I have talked. The other element of this is the projects that are being financed have to be physically located. Within the urban renewal area, area of boundaries, so. If part of this, uh, Highway one oh five project technically is outside those boundaries. Well, that's another part of the amendment that we would identify. Technically adding all that highway right of way into the urban renewal area.
Okay. So we need, we've got, we've got the projects, I think, figured out as far as our end, but we need to gather the parcel numbers then. To include in that plan as where we're capturing our TIF from.
Anything that's not already identified in the plan and also the other element of the plan. Is what the law calls an ordinance. And the ordinance is the key to identifying the taxable property. So we need to identify the new turbines both in the plan and then we amend that ordinance. And that specifies these are the taxable properties from which we're going to gain new revenue. All of it comes together pretty, pretty quickly when we have the, the, uh, the details.
Okay. I just don't know if we have parcels yet or how they're identifying.
Right. But the interesting thing about the, the turbine law, not necessarily the TIF law. Is that when it was adopted a number of years ago, it gives a special, as I'm sure you know, a special. Uh, dispensation for turbine property. That is limited in the amount that it can be assessed to no more than thirty percent of its acquisition value. But that goes on the books at a level of like five percent a year over seven years. So the first year, the most that, of the value that's there is only five percent of whatever the acquisition. So it ramps up and that's what produces increased revenue for the county. So we just want, as, as Jackie and I discussed, the first year under the law, the value technically is zero. And so that, that's fine, it doesn't produce anything, but we wanna make sure we get these added. So you don't in some fashion miss out on that, what we call second year where there would be at least five percent. Of that value.
And with the time sensitivity of highway not, uh, Highway one oh five. We might not have that information prior to meeting to do something with Highway one oh five. And adding them, adding that legal, or that legal description to the, um, map.
Right.
So if we, if we, so if we added that to our plan now, we could utilize what TIF dollars we have available from other places. To get that through if we needed to, but we still need to obviously get that wind farm.
That's what we have to do for that one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but then regardless, we gotta get the parcel numbers of the wind farm brought into that as well.
Right. It doesn't have to be done, but we don't have to do all of that at the same time. The primary thing just to keep you in compliance with state law. Before you use any of the TIF revenue on the one oh five, we need to get the plan amended. Amended to identify that as a project on which TIF will be spent. That can be done pretty quickly, pretty easily. And if, if we happen to have the, the turbine parcel numbers, we can do it all together. And if we don't, we should go ahead and do the, the amendment that speaks to making it legal to spend that TIF money.
Correct, so we can.
And then if you have other projects, we need to talk about those, but those can be done, I don't wanna say on their own time, but. But in their own, uh, fashion, yeah, pardon me.
If we wanted to, for sure, get one oh five in it, then if we wanted to add courthouse or. Secondary roads, buildings, or conservation buildings or something, we could add that later.
Or more roads.
Or more roads, yeah. We could add that now or we could add it later when we do the, the parcels for the wind farm and.
The, the, the element that the law looks to just from a public information standpoint. Is having enough detail so that someone reading a couple of sentences or paragraphs can say, oh, okay. Now I understand the board is gonna do this particular, uh, this many miles or something of, uh, of Highway one oh five. Or whatever it is. And their estimate is they're gonna spend this much, uh, in TIF revenue. That, that's really all that we have to have.
Okay. Alright, so that's the step, first step, we gotta do sooner than later, that.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, so once, once you provide that information, I can put together what we call this amendment, twenty twenty-one amendment to the plan. The board's action will be to set a date for a hearing on that plan. And, uh, at the next meeting then, that amendment can be approved. The law requires a notification process in your case to, um, school districts. That have property within the urban renewal area. And that's just, that's been a requirement in the law for many years, just to notify. Uh, for cities, for example, they need to notify you, your board, as well as school districts, counties. Just need to notify, uh, school districts that happen to have taxable property in your urban renewal area. But, but literally that, that, after publishing a notice period, that's all the process requires before you hold a hearing and adopt the amendment.
Okay. Alright, so if we get you the, the stuff we need to get one oh five done, you'll assist us with getting that drawn up? And then we can start the public hearing process on our end.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Sounds good. And then we'll just, and then we'll have to start with the rest. And hopefully get that stuff figured out within the next few months or so. Um, cause we wanna make sure we got it in before any taxation starts, so we don't lose five percent availability, so. Okay.
Yeah, well, at, at this point in the year, uh, we've really got, it, it doesn't make, well, may. Uh, we're not up against, you're not up against a deadline. If so, unless something, if something's already gone on the tax rolls at more than zero, we really need to know that. But I, I gather from Jackie, that's probably not the case.
No.
But I, I'd like to make sure that's true.
Yeah.
That'd be a question for the assessor.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. Yes, that's the, that's the source.
And, and we have not. It would all be BLLs and we have not.
Okay.
So it has not come there yet, but, okay.
If we don't get the wind farm, new wind farm. An amendment done on that, you said we'd lose the five percent, so the maximum we'd get after seven years is only twenty-five percent instead of thirty? Is that the way that thing works?
It is, but there's no reason or that, that that's gonna happen unless.
Right, I'm just asking.
More information, I'm not, yeah, no, you're, you're correct, yes, yes, you wouldn't lose all of it.
You wouldn't wanna do that.
By first five percent, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, sounds like we got that figured out, I guess.
Okay.
You guys, any more questions or?
No, no.
Anything else that we're missing, Bob, or are we kind of on the right path now with this, do you think?
This is what I can help you do when you're ready to do it.
Okay, I like that attitude.
Alright.
I'll get cost information from Rich.
Yes.
Yep, we'll get that stuff for the one oh five project and get it sent to you as soon as possible now.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, Bob, appreciate your time.
Good to talk with you folks. Have a good Monday.
You too, thank you, bye.
Alright, bye, bye.
There we go, nice work, quick too. I, yeah.
Go from three point seven to what?
Four, is that the way you got it covered?
Yeah, I mean, this way.
Well, do you have an actual?
Yeah, I've got an actual bid, things change.
We already did the actual bid, I got it written down, but yeah, I think there can be changes in there.
If you have an actual back, you know, we can send that to him and that he.
Just, you never know with construction.
Right, and then we.
He's done this before.
Right, we have to decide whether we're gonna use that one oh five trust fund, which I don't think we should.
Well, we could.
Do, you just pay it back, I guess, cause.
So we can recap.
The thing is, is that you gotta be, you know, if we got, starting to go on, that money's not available, we're gonna have to tap the one oh five trust fund.
And I have no problem with that as long as we can.
And it's up to you guys whether you pay it back or not.
The other thing we could, I, I don't know the details yet, but. One of the things that you can use the new money for is for roads. And that might be a simple thing, just, uh, utilize it for and move on, but I don't know how quick.
What's that?
With the road descriptions, you just say from one oh five and it's right away from here to here, do, I remember.
Do you have like mile markers you can run off of?
Well, we could run section corners and things like that, but I remember when Jim Hyde was here, I remember, I remember we were doing. Descriptions of the actual properties that the towers were sitting, uh, just to strip, that was a pain in the butt.
Well, yeah, you gotta do that, but.
That's for the tower.
But I don't know if that was, or what was all included in.
Freeway should have section numbers, if these towers you're at in the top. That's gonna be easy, but on the other side of the. Oh, parcel. Isn't, isn't everything in our urban renewal plan in Worth County?
No, I know Mitchell County, Mitchell said all of our roads are in.
It should be, we should have all of our roads in.
That's something you could do too, I mean, start doing that and then everything is actually accessible without having to amend.
Yeah.
Every gravel.
Makes it easier.
Just do one amendment and take care of all the roads.
We have time for the deer prick, getting that taken care of, it's, it's take care of the one oh five project.
We need to get that amended down.
The other TIF projects.
The other.
And that should all be taken care of as far as legalities and legal terms and stuff, it's just a matter of getting one oh five into the plan and. Pressing the rest of you.
I mean, even if you do amend all of the roads into the system, I think they still want specific projects that.
Right, which.
Which you could do all at the same time when you identify the project.
Right, right.
That's gonna be, that's pretty much what he said too.
We just need to get. Rest of it we can do after.
Later this summer.
We're running out of time on that one.
Yep, yep. So.
Okay, so where's the money coming, where the three hundred ninety street bridge? Is that one point two, where does that come from?
That's not all, that, that one point two is split between Mitchell and Worth County's bridges, it's a tied project. I can't remember if that's the seven hundred thousand dollar bridge, but that money comes from federal dollars that were. I don't wanna say earmarked, but there was a process that we applied for funding for these bridges. And so some of that money is gonna be federal money, some of it's gonna be our state bridge money. So we shouldn't have any local dollars to put into that. But as we use the state money down, we take money out of that pool or account. And as bridges become available, you know, there's only so much we can borrow ahead of those bridges, so now we're looking at to supplement, we need the local money to do other bridge work. If we continue to, to do as many projects as we need to.
If we get ahead of what the state puts in.
Um, yeah, I mean, which is not tough to do.
We're jumping.
It's not tough to do, when you only get two hundred thousand dollars a year less, that doesn't take.
We never get ahead of.
We never get.
We never get ahead.
They make sure you never get ahead.
And considering the system was all kind of put in at the same time, it seems like it's just everything fails at the same time, so that's the problem. So yeah, that, that, that money is a local money at that, at that point. When I, when I, guys, when I presented you guys the, the, the five year plan.
Right.
It was an outlook of where I think the balances will be in these accounts and where we'll need to supplement. Like on a far to market project. They don't let us borrow more than three year ahead. So if we're gonna use far to market, they say, okay, fine, but you're writing us a check right away so that the account's taken care of. So they are, there's no, no letting you borrow ahead and then, okay, we'll pay it back, they want it upfront, so. It's either do that or do local.
Yeah.
And either way, the local money's not a supplement.
And on this thing here, it's the L's. And on this thing here, it's the Ls that we have to worry about.
Ls are typically what you worry about. Now, that's true to a certain, I've got some stuff programmed as FM, but also in that Excel spreadsheet, they said, okay, we can do this FM. But here are the thing, we need to supplement X amount in order for this to stay FM.
Okay.
It's kind of a bouncing back and forth. We try to use as much of that other money as we can, because there's not enough local money to.
Justify to do that.
Like I told you guys, I, we're probably at a little, at a position where other counties were ten years ago, you know, without TIF. So the rest of the funds, maybe, with those allocated roads. We have.
I, I don't know much about it yet, but that was one of the things.
I thought there was a discussion about that, yeah.
That was a discussion that was going.
We had a reimbursement last, last road use tax fund round that was kind of a supplement to what the road use tax, gas tax didn't collect during COVID. And the feds supplemented a portion of that. So we did get a little bit of money back in the road use tax fund, but it'll just.
That was what they considered lost from.
Basically, basically. So what it, what it said was, we had a budget, we figured we're gonna get this for road use tax and COVID came, it's okay, well, now you're gonna get less. Well, now they kind of backfilled it. So we're kind of back where, and the, the amount you get is kind of absorbed in, in everything. It's not like, oh, do we got extra money? Let's go and start to an extra project, because it's not, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
It's.
Kind of keep shit flush.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I feel get, uh, Jackie that info, she can. She can send that to Bob and.
Get that amendment number one oh five.
Set a public hearing date next week and get it posted.
Cause we can get it in there and let's just, let's just say, you know, we'll put those rock down now and we come into some budget issues because we put a lot of rock down. There's a little bit there. We could say, okay, we're gonna supplement it when to that project. We can say, we're gonna throw this TIF money to, to cover that. Because it's gonna get paid for, so the contractor's gonna get paid hopefully either way. It needs to get done.
Yeah.
Okay.
There were a bunch of, on one of the, um, things that I found, there were a bunch of TIF routes. And so all TIF routes are, there's a one rod sixteen and a half feet each side of the center line. And like it said, on four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty street on Spruce Avenue, D R O Avenue. So I don't know if that's all you need or.
Cause I would like to be more general than that, say all county roads and their right of, and their legal right of way and just not, because I really, because sometimes you get these roads that are goofy right of ways on them. Okay, you gotta describe all that or just, it would be easy just to be general and just say.
They don't have to be real specific.
I don't even, I don't, I didn't get too long and then they just said we're gonna TIF all.
Somewhat accurate, so that's a couple of sentences, they know what's going on.
Like he said, yeah, somewhat accurate, so that they, there's a little bit of.
I mean, if you could say one oh five, one, highway one oh five and it's applicable right of way, I mean, wouldn't that be enough?
Right.
We're not gonna work out some.
From.
Well. I mean, if you were gonna add all the roads into the system, but you just say all these roads and they're applicable right of ways and be done, I mean.
Good question.
Yeah, if you have to specifically list each four twenty, four thirty.
They would probably want it that way, but it'd be nice just to say, okay, would it just cause.
Like I say, if you go into, you know, highway one oh five from Apple Avenue to Zinni Avenue, and it's right away.
Yeah.
That would cover the entire stretch.
It would.
So then I could go east.
But are they gonna want, okay, twenty-five feet each side or center line or fifty feet each side? I wouldn't want, I mean, that's a lot of, that's.
Cause the, the right of way is established. But do we have to?
There's twenty-two different specifications on here.
But those were, were those twenty-two separate projects that? They might just email me that document. I. I'm not a lawyer, so.
Yeah.
Cause what else can you say? If you get the applicable right of way, you can't say, well, this, well, it fits in the right of way, it applies.
Yeah.
Then they have the west sixteen point five view to the southwest quarter of section six. One acre more plus, and they have all of them.
I think that's actually a tower location. We talked about it, because they weren't taking up more than an acre on each tower site.
Right.
So then what, I remember we did descriptions and I might've even done those where they had to go from the road, the driveway access and then this many feet around to a point of beginning again and then the next, it was just nuts. It was crazy.
Producing those tower legos was.
It took a long time. And it's just a lot of the same thing over and over again. You just put different numbers in.
Right.
Just insane.
That sounds like a bit of a process. It'll take a little time probably, so. But if we get the road in.
I remember Jim Hyde didn't want to do it, so he told me to do it.
You got experience.
Eleven years ago, I don't remember how he did it.
All right. Any else on that? Okay. Uh, supervisor weekly, two weeks worth, if you remember, we didn't really get to it last week, so.
Yes, I had partners for children and we basically went through the contracts and the funds that were left available to make sure everybody was on track. And the same thing with community partners for protecting children and we checked that by default. Then I had North Iowa Children's Alliance and we had to pre-grade each board member, eleven new funding applications for like the shots, vaccination for kids and this kind of stuff and that kind of stuff. And then we went through and graded all of those and decided what we would spend on each one of those projects. And that pretty much took care of my stuff that I had going on. The North Iowa Children's was quite involved.
Get those there once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark?
Oh, it was just spark sessions, I guess.
Oh, I guess I had those too.
Okay, I had those as well. And then I had a I C O G meeting last Monday. And, yeah, they were, got new buses, we start to arrive here before too long. And then start to hear some of the old buses. But yeah, hopefully we get another batch coming in sometime this summer. Uh, and then we won't meet again until September, I think, so. But everything's all pretty good down there. They've, if we get some assistance on the uh, from the feds as well for the pandemic, you know, they've been paying their bus drivers extra, the way it sounded. Getting reimbursed for all that. So it sounds like it's, it's, it's going really good there. So a lot of paperwork.
Are you getting any buses in Worth County?
Uh, I weren't sure where they were going yet, but.
Did last time.
We got one last time, that's why I was wondering, so.
Yeah. I can't remember how many more they were getting for sure, but got some more coming, the way it sounded, so. All right. Well, any else from the agenda? Other than the zoning meeting Wednesday night, there wouldn't be any overlap. I don't wanna speak individually, so. But better put it on there just to be safe. Okay. If nothing else, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All favor I. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.